I'm Camille, was knocked off and got her back on.
Um, so you started about twenty four hundred people in two thousand eight. And a little bit of dip around the COVID years and now you're at about thirty five, thirty two hundred fifty people. In year twenty twenty two, there's probably thirty three, thirty four hundred. Real problem about that just momentarily, you're primarily single family detached, but I think I'm actually being built definitely. So. One of the things we do in planning is we try to project the future, how many people. Now, having said that, I am, one of the first things I do when I teach my planning courses is I call the students. Pick up a plan, read the plan and tell me how many people are projected. How many housing units are projected, perhaps a housing units if possible, how many jobs? Ninety percent of the plans in this country do not have population projections. Housing projections, demographic projections, economic projections. What are you planning for? Um, so I teach my students numbers. Um, so I'm a planner, but I teach demographics, economics, public facility finance. Uh, don't give me a map to draw, but I'll tell you how to finance it. So that's where I'm coming from. So when I looked at the Chattahoochee Hills plan, again, it it had a a number for a population for the year twenty twenty six or something, but that was it. So when you do the plan update, I don't want to schedule. Um, think about generating numbers for your horizon year, which is forty years out. And you're not alone, but most, most places don't project out to the horizon year in Georgia, uh, even though I've already been, that's required by state law. So, uh, here are my my numbers based on really my conversations with Tom. In terms of the pipeline projects and existing population and other things. So our best guess, my best guess is. We're looking at going to fourteen thousand and some people by the year twenty forty. Now, we all know that can be a very low number. Because when the rest of the metropolitan market discovers you as if it hasn't already. Um, and when, when people realize what there is here and what you're doing here. Uh, I could be off by half, I mean, double whatever it is, because you could be looking at thirty thousand, forty thousand people by the year twenty forty in a heartbeat. So, um, and I'm gonna, um, when I do these presentations, I'm gonna wander into other areas that I'm gonna wander right now. Every three years or so, the National Association of Realtors does a survey. About where people want to live. They call it the community preference survey. Um, and the very first question that's asked in the survey is right now today, what kind of a home would you want to live in? A detached home, townhouse, condo, apartment, a single wide next door dog. They don't ask that much, but they, the other big request. Seventy percent, surprise, surprise, say they want to have a detached home. Then the survey does something very clever. They use what I call a forced choice with the literature policy in preference, but. Um, it says, okay, if you had two choices and only two choices. Uh, single family detached, large lot, drive everywhere, or a townhouse attached, you can walk everywhere. What would you choose? In the last survey, two thousand one three, fifty six percent said they would choose the townhouse. The walkable townhouse over the drivable detached home. That's up from fifty percent in two thousand fifteen. So, uh, the, the, the market is moving more and more to walkable communities, even if they have to trade off. If you can't be attached home to the detached home. Um, as I was mentioning to Tom earlier, before we got here. I run the numbers using the National Association of Realtors survey, and by the way, I trust their survey because they're not biased. They're not like a, a home building survey with a bias towards home building. They're not an environmental survey with a bias towards environmentalists, you know. This organization wants to sell product and they need to inform their realtors what the market is up to. So a lot more objective when you say where's the market heading? So, um. I run their numbers and I realize that, um, fifty five percent of Americans want to live in a walkable community. Thirteen percent live in a walkable community now. Huge, yeah. So he takes a survey to be able to say it here. Any questions anytime is far away.
Do you want to be called Chris, Dr. Chris? What do you want to be called? That's the first question.
Ah, Chris.
Okay. And the second question, now with these surveys, did they take in account the anomalies like Chattahoochee Bill where it's so intentional that. You know, there's people, a poor group of people that don't want to live.
Yeah, that's true. Forty four percent of those farmers don't want to live in a walkable community.
Okay.
Uh, call it half, which would be, you know, half, half do, half don't. Um, when, uh, when I was teaching in, in Palm Springs City, uh, University of Utah, there's a very famous new town, they're called, what is it called? Daybreak. And Daybreak is a master plan community of fifty thousand people. Uh, walkable everywhere, uh, townhouses, small lots, small homes, small lots. Um, accessory dwelling units, you know, all the things done right. Um, and I know builders building in Daybreak and so I taught them about Daybreak and they said, they said. Yeah, if you want a daydream, like environment, uh, Daybreak's great, but if you don't want it, you don't want to move there. So, you know, we have, we have a free society, free choices. But we have jiggered our zoning and planning so much that we're denying people choices. Um, and that's the big lesson from the first, the hero it is now men nowadays, the APA, the Plant Association, ULI, um, and, and others. And I'm part of a group actually that's working with, uh, Natural League of Cities on reframing their position on zoning. Because if they don't do it, the state government will do it for them. For example, um, just this past spring. The Reddest State in the Union, Montana, hold its cities, they shall have multifamily, a single family home, a lots. Took away the right of cities to have single families on it. You can have single family zoning, but you're, but duplexes and threeplexes and fourplexes are allowed by law in, in Montana. Uh, dead minority, a, a very blue state. So a very red state and a very blue state are going the same direction. In terms of state lockdown edicts on what local governments can or can't be. So even if, if, if we, if every home built in the US were built in a serenity, right? Between now and twenty fifty, we still wouldn't meet the current market demand. So that's why I'm saying, you know, be prepared for the world waking up to what you have here and you could be looking at thirty, forty thousand. And you can handle it, you know, you, you, you got pieces to handle it, but be prepared, uh, in case that happens. So at the bottom there, functional population. So I do a lot of, uh, planning for facilities. Uh, typically with parks and, uh, and so forth, we plan for people. But if we're looking for, looking at, um, public safety, fire, the police. We're looking at not just certain of the people living in the city, but also the workers. So the combination of workers and residents is called functional population. So I have a, a crew thing. Twenty four hours, seven days per week to get how many bodies occupy the city, residents. Uh, maybe, maybe a few others, others study to work out where the people may, may be driving in to work here. What was that number? Um, I estimate that number is about ten, three hundred, two point twenty, between weighted population and weighted worker. Uh, and then a global, just seven thousand, two hundred five, forty fifty, new set, one thousand functional population. And I'll, I'll, I'll come back to this number in the context of safety. So I'm gonna do a quick and dirty inventory, uh, of the facility, city hall, wonderful city halls, nice to be in that great school. Anybody actually went here for good school? Um, police, fire, road, population. These are the, um, key areas also for impact. Impact is also covered water sewer. But water sewer is not a management issue, I don't think, in the city. You're farming out the sewer probably at home and county. Um, water probably same thing, yeah, okay. Um, so the big ones for the city are, are Martin's five. And actually only four of those five are impact eligible, city hall, that's not eligible for impact, but I'll, I'll talk about that later. So city hall, we got this facility that's fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. Um, activated value, uh, from the city for what the city gave me, uh, for the city hall and land total value, two point five million dollars. Okay, so the city hall serves everybody, workers and residents. So that's where you see the functional population. So we have, uh, your city has six point two eight square feet of city hall space per functional resident. Now, that's a big number. You have a big building here and, and you have a lot of space here that you're not. Normally I see like happens where per, per system or per functional population. So. Ultimately that has eighty thousand people, uh, the facilities are about fifty percent.
Not too old.
Not too old. It'll also be the same thing. So, um, so then we take the six point two eight square feet for a person that you have now. And we look at your projected delta population growth, ninety thousand new functional population residents. With the average of the residents and workers. And we, we see that you're gonna have to handle six thousand square feet. The piece that comes down to a thirty, and now it costs you ten million dollars. Well, what's wrong with that line of thought? My.
He's not moving here, but yeah.
With it, yeah, it doesn't scale for, for what I'm doing, what I'm doing. My guess is you can have the same square feet determining if people want to, that's the edge you have now. So, um, you know, this is how, uh, analysts would look at your numbers and say, okay, you've got a ten million dollar bill basically. No, 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 let's get real about this. Um, you're sitting all in, even with what's. How many, fifty thousand? Um, so police now, uh, I actually, what I did here, uh, on the city hall is I backed out the police department. So this fourteen thousand five hundred square feet is, it excludes the police parts. Speaking of police part, I think it is where you're looking, you're gonna have to, as the city grows and you need roads, climb roads. Uh, you're gonna have to add more, uh, police officers, more feet, obviously. So, so this might be a realistic thing to look at. You've got about a thousand square feet of police space in this building, let me just say. Um, and unfortunately, go in anything else, the, the total value is about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Um, now, I'm not sure we call that replacement value. That's sort of just on the hook value. If you had to build that thousand square feet for a set of piece of land, it probably would cost a lot more than a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. But let's just take the numbers as they are. Functional population in twenty twenty, we get point four three. Square feet for functional resident. That's just about right for. Uh, cities and counties, I don't know where I'm in this part of the country. So point four, point five square feet per capita. Uh, for police space, you're gonna grow by nine thousand functional residents by the year twenty forty. You have, you'll have to add a four thousand square feet. Whether it's in this building or a brand new building someplace else, that's what, that's what you're looking at. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Before I just ruin my hand for six hours, are you gonna give us this presentation?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Um, yeah, so six hundred, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars to add four thousand new square feet. Uh, that's a low number because that's just taking this, this physical building and just, uh, pro, uh, pro rating into the future. Yeah, maybe it's a million dollars, but it's, 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 it's gonna be a posh bit you'll be looking at. And then we look at fire. I'm just going by your, your fire station, very, very traffic, very, very central. Um, but we run through the same sort of analysis. So you've got five thousand seven hundred square feet. On two acres, a, a one acre with two engines. And you can see the values there, one point four million dollars. That's probably a good value right now for replacement, except maybe inflation kicks in. Uh, again, the functional population, two point four six square feet per functional resident, that's on the high side. Normally, again, we see that number down around a half a square foot, maybe a square foot per person. Which tells me that your fire station can handle a double in the population.
Yeah. So, so just an aside, right, two things. One is we've got a good land. So while all the metrics we say we could spot because we don't have things where things are. And one of the other things we're mitigating is for any conditions of zoning where developments are coming in saying they have to put this fire station on their land and all that. Or, or get us the truck we don't have, for their doll building or whatever. So I mean, you know, that stuff that we're aware of. We are over policed and over fired based on population alone, but our circumstances are kind of different. We've got so much traffic and people outside, it also doesn't impact. About, you know, most accidents, people on the roadway aren't even checking those citizens, the people driving through. The developments on both sides of those, right, so it's, it's, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned the sort of location issue. Um, I work with fire chiefs, um, we have a testing relationship for a reason, I'll explain later, but. Um, you know, if you want a, a response time, that station does not give you five minutes, but not even a ceremony. So, uh, you may have to build a new station around ceremony or get a new station outside where the, um, that's, the sled is the, Rosebud.
This one.
Um, or, oh, a little aside on the fire chiefs. So, um. When I was planning director, I was, had a checkered light when I was a planning director in a rural county in Oregon. Um, I wondered why we were acquiring forty six foot wide paved roads. And I went and, and the, the, it's been there and who put it there? The fire chief. Why does he say the forty six foot wide paved streets, governor, to the curb, to the, to go ask him? So I'm gonna ask him, I'm gonna ask him, I was twenty five years old. You know, this birdie guy on five foot six, this six foot ten guy or something, fifty, sixty years old. Well, son, it's like this. He says, the streets have to be wide enough so that cars are, can be parked on both sides. With doors open simultaneously. And fire engines going opposite directions on both sides of the road with his men dangling on the ends. That's playing in forty six foot wide streets. And I couldn't change mine, so then I left the county. Um, the city of Portland had the same issue with, uh, this fire chief. Um, and the planner said a very clever thing. They said to the, to the police chief, okay. Bring your ladder truck out to one of these narrow streets. Twenty, twenty foot wide street, basically two ten foot travel lanes. At one side was actually parking, so the route is really narrow. Um, and the planner said, turn your ladder truck around into the street. Chief could do it. And the planner said, well, what's your issue with, with equipment access on this kind of a street? I don't have an issue. And so since then, Portland has been allowing very small streets to occur in, in new developments.
Still another sign.
Yeah.
We do that too, okay? And our chief is amazing about that, that he has recognition and given the substance. More children get run over on wide streets because traffic isn't moving too fast than people ever do in fires. So we only allow narrow street economies and we go out with our trucks. And drive every road in developments and do all the tire lane marking based on.
Yes, sir.
Where we, we do a lot of that, actually, actually. I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep doing this to you too because so many of the thoughtful things are already in Arizona.
Please, please, uh, I'm gonna be interrupting. Um, so in addition to safety, narrow streets increase the property value. So you have higher value, higher property tax over is coming in, safer streets, what's not?
You have lower infrastructure costs.
That's right, exactly. Speaking of roads, I really couldn't get my arms around your road demand situation. It's as Tom was telling me earlier. You know, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, of which I am a full member. Um, says, you know, plan on ten trips per day for, for, you know, whatever the number is. Um, and you have four.
So on the number traffic studies in Serendip, that includes the tourist traffic, the number of the traffic, with some four trips per husband.
So, um.
What's the rest of us, though?
The rest of us is probably pretty.
Pretty close.
Cynical to the norm, yeah.
Oh, cynical. What, what is the norm? Ten?
Ten, 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 yeah. Um, so, uh, on the one hand, if you're gonna be tripling a population, whatever the number is, you could be looking at. Uh, pretty stiff road bills, but the flip side is here's where the level of service, uh, question comes in. Um, right now, I drove, thanks to Tom's guidance and his Google map, I drove a lot of your roads today, this morning. And there was no traffic. I drove in the morning and there's no morning rush hour, right? Um, I suspect there's no evening rush hour either. Um, so your roads are functioning at what we call a level of service A.
Three, four, yeah.
Um.
There's probably fifteen minutes in the morning, just trying to cross the parkway, which.
Yeah, I, I consider.
That's it. And then there's two, a couple of them, like.
Only times that we're ever below A, yeah. Well, while we're probably here, it's the trip generation, each, when you go to the store, that's two trips, one out, one back, right? So when you think of ten trips, it's not ten errands.
It's probably that. Those hustle trips are individual trips.
Hustle, total trips for the households.
And there are modifiers, like when they do the traffic studies for us, right, there are modifiers that they use based on the type of development that you're talking about. So mixed use, walkable, gets a lower score automatically. Um, size, if it's really small, but if it's smaller, because obviously you can't have five people in the, when they're in a mouse, whatever, it's, it's modifiable by its apology. Let's be able to look at the norms.
So I'm gonna, uh, talk a few more minutes about roads. Um. You know, when you're a level service A here, uh, on, on, on an average daily basis, you have a peak problem sometimes in some places, but. I like to look at roads on an average daily basis, or, or peak, a P and P, sorry, not here. Um, the, at, at a level of service A, um, you're looking at maybe, um. A thousand cars per day passing. And that, I don't know the precise number, but that's about it. So the higher the level of service, B, C, D, E, F, that's congestion. E is just before the shift. So a level of service C gives you maybe about three thousand vehicles per day. Because you can have more cars, a level service E gets you up to maybe seven, six, seven thousand vehicles per day for lane mile. Um, so, um, a lot of local governors I work with say, well, we want to have level of service C. On their roads. And C is, you know, there's some traffic, but everything's flowing smoothly. Um, and then I say, well, okay, if you take level service C, we own the capacity, divide that by road. That means you're gonna have to add about, you know, thirty linear miles of new roads. At a cost of two million dollars per linear mile. Oh, we can't afford that. Well, what's the next step? Well, D gives you more capacity, E gives you even, E gives you the most capacity before congestion. So a lot of my clients have drifted over the years to a level of service E. Which is about six or seven thousand vehicles per day on a, on a road like this. Uh, when you, when you look at that, you've got plenty of road capacity all along the city. Now you have, you'll have spots where that's not gonna work. But that's what you have to study for, to fix when you, when you need to. So I'm not terribly concerned about, um, long-term master plans for building massive new roads in. In the city, at least not yet, because this is the way you're doing your planning.
How does that work with adding the through traffic that's not generated from our homes?
Okay, your through traffic is mostly on a definable arterioles, uh.
South of Parkway, chopping a road.
And those are all included in the traffic studies, right? So, so three other asides here. One is just for perspective. Twenty nine going through Palmetto, United League, right, which is a two lane list. Has about eleven to twelve thousand car trips a day. That's from G-DOT, right? So that gives you an impression of what eleven thousand trips on one road looks like in a day. On a two lane. Our zoning basically says that we don't lie in our two lane roads, right? We're focusing development on the roadway. So there will be some limiting that happens to development later on, because you can't, you can't fit this development. Our zoning does not take into our roads, right? So limits impact on gravel, which is, there are things that we've done already in zoning to help mitigate this traffic.
So, but it, it kind of boggles my mind. We read the Palmetto, you know, the, to our cities that have four thousand. Um, car trips a day, and wait a minute, that's like four times as much as highway, could that be right, or?
I mean, if, if they build it, they'll build a suburban sprawl for all. Now, which is why we're gonna close it for today.
Now, I'm gonna talk about your roads, like the county or the state, their, their roads, they have to secure their roads, right? So you tell them Fulton Parkway, if it's not functioning the way it should, somebody else will have to spend the money to fix it.
And they've already got the plans.
It's just such a hot button issue. That's why we're drilling down on the whole.
Yeah, so here's where I've been struggling with what is your highway capacity. Uh, and here you can see the, uh, these are average daily. Uh, traffic, the, the two, two lanes, uh, so I'm, I'm using both lanes, two lanes times eight per, uh, thousand per day of sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, cars per day at levels of this E, but you can see how these, uh, scaled down and A is so, um. So unrealistic, we don't need to report that. Um, so five thousand vehicles per day at B and, uh. Per, per, per lane, eight thousand per, at, at E. Um, and here's your own, here are the traffic numbers from, I got this from the, uh, Rosebud study. So I, I don't know that you have on your city roads, I don't know that you have a serious long-term issue. Managing future highway investment. And, and your developments are gonna be so, um, unique, the Rosebud is, as an example. We're gonna have your traffic studies for those particular ones and you figure out what's needed to mitigate those impacts. For people to know what they're doing, um, and you're doing that, so.
One, one thing that doesn't show up in, in what we've been able to assess. Is the fact that right now we've got about two and a half to three million dollars for short fall and maintenance costs just on some new roads, forget traffic, keeping the pavement and all that. So our biggest problem, there against tax base and not anything else.
On the segue, later on, two hours from now, sorry, I've got a slide on, it's interesting right now. So, uh, you know, you have a problem right now. Your city is growing. Uh, one very easy financial fix is to create a special district to terminate with the city boundary. Uh, one very easy financial fix is to create a special district to co-terminate with the city boundaries. Or just roads, so road special service district. Uh, statewide, give cities tremendous flexibility in creating new taxing entities like special districts. And do it sooner than later, because you could be building in anti-votes many wrong, but right now, everybody's facing the same financial issue. This is a way to solve it, and then you do something a little different, uh, if you set it up this way, and I may go over it again once we get to the slide again, but. So, how, what is the assessment base then for the special service district? I think the law, and maybe go public with this, but I think the law is flexible enough to have you decide how you actually do the assessment. Now, simply, the assessment could be based on property value, and a lot of people do that, it's simple. Or it could be done on front feet of the road, right? Uh, I'll let people do it that way, or it could be done on the particular kind of developments. And so what you might do, you might consider doing, I'm not happy to help you think this through later on, is. Use the road impact fee methodology as your, as your base for portioning the assessment across the property.
Exactly.
Exactly, so you take, um, you take the I T E manuals, um. And you might adjust them for your own local knowledge, when you take the I T E manuals, and you have so many single-family detached homes. And they generate so many trips according to I T E, Institute of Transportation Engineers. Um, and then, and, and maybe, so maybe the single-family homes are one-third of the total trip calculation. So therefore, they pay one-third of the assessment that year. And if you have a thousand single-family homes, each one of them are, and the one-third of their, of their share. Very simple, very straightforward, and I think it's legal.
A different thing than, when you first mentioned the special service district, I tend to think of a district as an area. Would that be applied to specific roads, and is that? Really different development.
So this would be different in this system line?
Yeah, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways to accomplish, you can have road by road. That's a nightmare for me. Citywide, that's simple. Um, but you have to be sure that you, you need to be fair to parts of the city, some parts are, are very efficient, less costly than other, other parts. But there are, there are a lot of ways to sort of address these issues within a special service district, district construct. Um, and that offloads your annual road budget, that doesn't become applied in city council every year. That's done administratively by the people in charge of that special service district.
The, the difference is it is based on the amount of impact you're actually having, rather than just the fact that you're happening. So it, it would open that regard.
Got it. And isn't that really the gist of, of impact fees, is it supposed to. Address that specific development, that they're having the impact on the city, right?
Yes, so what, yeah, what we can do here is, um, if you decide you need. Roads, and, and maybe road impact fees can help, so road impact fees pay for the capital cost, not the owner, not the maintenance. So you have a two-tiered financial structure, impact fees build it, the special, uh, the special district manages.
So the fact is, though, that, yeah, the, the build-out methodology here, we continue doing the kind of developments that we've been doing. You know, where. Place like Saran, we come to the sort of acreage, it's huge in the tax system. Right, as the developments, the old M comes from just the tax base growing, that's fine. And, and right now, the way that we're handling the impact of things with conditions of zoning, based on the impact of the traffic studies. So there might be a broader way to do that, you know, and thinking about what's fair there is a good way to look at that.
So speaking of ladder trucks, um, I took my students, uh, when I was at Georgia Tech, to, um, gosh. Um, studio in central Georgia, um, Sandersville. Where they have the big cable lines. Um, so they did, they did, so Sandersville called us up, and they said, can you help us with that development? And sure, we'll help, and we went out there, student studio, and, and we came to the conclusion that, well, the only thing that's going for you is the cable line. Um, and once that plays out, then, then you're in trouble. Um, but in the meantime, the mayor took us to downtown Sandersville, and he walked the students around, and was very proud of, very attracted to the city. Small town, and he says, and look at this building here, nice, brand-new building on the square, blends right in. And he says, do you know what that building cost the city? It's not complete, it cost the city, this was nineteen ninety-five, it cost the city a half a million dollars, at nineteen ninety-five dollars, which is like one point five million dollars now. And I said, well, how did that happen? The brand-new building was thirty-eight feet. Now, the reason why your zoning codes have a thirty-five-foot cap in your building height. Is to be below the, one of the, uh, insurance companies say you have to have a ladder truck.
Oh, okay.
Anything above thirty-five feet requires a ladder, well, steel, you know, things like that, but, um. So he said, that building, we, either we had to buy a, a ladder truck. Or raise, or, or everybody's fire insurance and premiums would go up that year. And they, they did, they did a calculation, the collective fire insurance premiums would go up by a million dollars a year. But the city bought half a million dollar ladder truck, that wouldn't happen, so the city, and they bought half a million dollar fire truck. Um, so that's, you know, why do we have thirty-five feet in zoning codes or places like Tannucci Hills, it's the ladder truck issue, until, until Rosebud comes along, busted.
No, but that's why we're making the mountain ladder truck.
Yeah, that's right. So parks and recreation, my word, you have parks here. Um.
Really?
So, um, you know, I run the numbers, you know, and I calculate everything else, and, and. This is just to show you, uh, what you've got, uh, you've got, um. You've got, let's see. Four hundred acres of park per thousand population, the natural recommendation is five. And, um, your facilities, you, you have one point four square feet of facilities per capita. Um, my customary number that I, that I work with is about a half a square foot per capita. Um, so, uh, you're doing pretty well on your parks and recreation, thank you very much, and you will continue to do well because. Of the money you're generating by the sale of density rights, that is now nineteen-five per ride or something? About twenty thousand dollars per density ride, uh, that I'll get into a little later on. Uh, you have a unique set of circumstances, or you know that, but I'm here to remind you that you're, you're unique, and in particular ways, you're unique.
We also require civic space in all developments, right? So even though that's not technically a city park, it is a park in the city for the benefit of city residents. And we now allow people to go make children's space in the city, as additional right on, like the studios, right, so.
Yep. So, as, as we're going through this, I'm, I'm checking off your realistic needs for impact fees. You don't need park and recreation impact fees, you've already got a way to take that, and you're, you're, you're overwhelmed with those things. Um, okay, so how do we pay for this stuff? Now, you're doing a pretty good job, as, but you have your three million dollar per year road budget, and so there's some things that you can look at. So I'm gonna go through, um, a few of these things here, so here's your budget from last year, twenty twenty-two. Um, and so what I do is I take your current, uh, revenue source, uh, property taxes, sales taxes, hotel, motel. Branch out all of these things, all of your income from your audit report for twenty twenty-two. And then I look at, then I divide that by your, um, current functional population, two thousand three hundred twenty-five functional residents. That's the weighted average of the residents and the workers, and so you're generating about twenty-six hundred dollars per functional resident in the city. Um, and that's about right, I mean, that's about, uh, the ballpark that I'd expect cities of this size. If you're gonna add nine thousand new functional residents, you're gonna generate between twenty twenty-two and twenty forty. You're gonna add new revenue each and every year, that cumulative new revenue. From just the nine thousand new functional residents is a quarter of a billion dollars. Now, any given year, it's not that much money, of course, it's like, it's gonna be, um, seven million dollars this year, and seven point two next year, on, you know. But the cumulative new revenue. Between now and twenty forty, from the, the, the new workers and new residents, is a quarter of a billion dollars. Now, if you, if you know that, you know, and, and here, you, I'm telling you where it is. If you know this number in advance, you can do some interesting long-range budgeting. To figure out how to maximize the, the use of this new money coming in. Um, and I'll get back to this a little later on to talk about, uh, impact fees. So, um, I had mentioned the special service district, so Georgia is very, um, uh, flexible, um, I believe, you know, I have not done one of these in Georgia. I've actually litigated one, I was the expert in the litigation on impact fees. Where the, the city, unnamed city, um, was collecting a fire impact fee. And giving the fire impact fee to the fire special district. That had no plan to spend the money, except to pay their officer's and binding interest. And I said, well, where's your plan to spend the money for new facilities in the city, and they have no plan. And I said, that's a violation of law, and the judge agreed, so they keep the money back.
Oh, um, how do you give money back?
Um, anyway, so, uh, I, I didn't know in Georgia, you have fire districts, police districts, hospital districts. Um, for schools, so that's a separate, special, um, but, you know, and mosquito control districts. So all of these things are.
How about armadillo control?
Um, so I'm gonna recommend that as you're, you're still small, and you're gonna be big. Do things now to simplify the future life by having a road special service district, you were talking or thinking about a fire special service district. Maybe a police special service district. Um, and that way you begin working on offload these costs onto, um, the facilities themselves, and that's a responsible way for government management. I used to teach, teach public finance at Georgia Tech, and that, I promise you, this is how you maximize efficiency in government by doing these kinds of things. Actually, I, one of my tests at the end of the year, um. I, I, I picked a, I, I created a fictitious county. Right about here, right about where Tannucci Hills is, in your, your early nineteen nineties. And I said, here's a brand-new county carved out by the state. And, and a whole of students is gonna have fifty thousand people, and so many workers, and, 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 you know, so many costs. You come up with a scheme that meets my public finance criteria, and then you oppose that on, on city. And I wanted to have them go, you know, have a progressive income tax, and progressive sales tax, and all these things. Um, and one student. Came up with a, his solution was a stadium. They were generating all the money from sales of the stadium to pay all the city bills. I flunked him. Um, but I flunked him with it, with, I knew that he was still using, he was just playing games with me, I said, well. Normally I'd flunk you, and, and you can't just throw a second chance, but I know, I know what you're doing. And he was sheepish, he said, yeah, I don't know. So I gave him a, a week to, to fix it and bring it back, he got everything, of course. So, anyway, um.
Explain it, Lucy, uh, just wasn't gonna work, or?
Well, it was not realistic.
Okay.
No, I, let's be real, you know, I'm gonna be real with the fictitious county, right?
You can't picture why you didn't do anything. Yeah, that fails in your gym.
Okay, gotcha.
Oh, speaking of, oh, gosh, who was this? Somewhere. Oh, I don't. Uh, my county where I was planning to rent the oil, we had a brand spanking new nuclear power plant. It tripled the valley, property value of the whole county, and we could build fire stations and new schools and every, everywhere. And then one day, the power plant shut down and was demolished, and the whole tax base collapsed. And now the county's one of the poorest towns in the whole state. Um, so, so here we get to, you know, fictitious, uh, idea about how a road special service district might operate. So conceptually, and, and we're not doing impact fees for road expansion here, we're just looking at the road maintenance costs, and I just put the number out. One point four million dollars a year, your, your actual number is what, double ladder, something?
Probably, but this, this is my.
Okay. So, um, we, we look at your office, you know, office square feet, and retail square feet, institutional, and residential. Um, and, and add up, you know. Do the math, add everything up, and so we come up with, in this case, seventy thousand trips per year. Uh, divided by one point four million dollars is twenty dollars per trip per year for a house, so if a house, uh, is, um. I'm gonna have one of these next one. Yeah, so, um, here's what the, the individual offices and retails and residential will be paid. Offices would pay twenty dollars per trip, at five trips for a thousand square feet, um, uh, of, of the office. Is a hundred dollars per square year for a thousand square feet. This is a sort of a formula that you would use, and you simply apply it on the tax records, and you'd collect the money from the, the property tax process.
So the important thing to consider for us, right, is that these other units don't exist yet. So there's nobody to offer this option, but what this is, is a fairer way, when things build out. To distribute the cost for things to the people who are creating the, the, the need, right? So you set something like this up for the future, it doesn't help us now, because the only people who pay are residents, right?
So as you set the structure for the future, is it really each year, or is the numbers changed?
Every year.
Okay.
You, your staff comes up with a budget every year.
If only we had someone that knew what to do.
Yeah.
The thing again is you're, you're reducing regular cash flow and property debt, and, and.
I'm always bothered.
Let's see, one more thing here, oh, um, and it just worked, the, the bottom line is, you achieve efficiency, I mean. The burden falls on purportedly to the source of the impact from the travel. Rather than a general tax where people who don't impact roads are still paying for roads, and vice versa. And again, I'd be happy to, this is not rocket science, I'd be happy to help you think through these things in more detail. Um, but once it's set up, it's driven by staff. Now, there's something else that's a little different, um, it's called a community improvement district, and it's a CID. Um, it came about, um, in the late nineties, um. Structurally, where property owners in, uh, the north perimeter area in Fulton and, uh, DeKalb County. Didn't wanna pay impact fees for roads. And I was working with Fulton County and, and DeKalb County in Atlanta, on, and I wrote, wrote the Atlanta impact fee ordinance. Um, and so the, the, the building, the property owners went to the legislature and said. We want you to give us the ability to create our own little special service district on a, a CID. And we will take care of our own infrastructure. And we don't want any charge of impact fees, or connection fees, or anything like that, we'll do it all ourselves. Well, just like you said, that's fine, and I, you know, it's okay with me. Even though I, I wrote the impact fee law, right, and, and there, these guys were responding to the, my impact fee law. And I, so I'm concerned, have at it, do it, do it this way, it's better anyway. So, uh, seventy-five percent of the property owners in an area have to agree to create a CID. And they say self-serving local government, basically. And they figure out what they need to, to build and pay for, uh, and they, then they raise the money from their own, uh, their, their CID. Um, now, uh, these are fairly complex deals, and, and, and they do work, but you need to have a professional staff that knows what they're doing. And, and willing property owners who really wanna assess themselves to pay for big ticket items, and continue to be assessed and paid for these things. Well, it's probably not a, a viable deal in. Well, it's probably not a, a viable deal in Chanhooche Hills, except maybe along pieces of South Fulton Parkway. Uh maybe not all of it, maybe all of it, I don't know. Um, but it's something I throw out just to, you know, think about later on as, as you start to grow, not grow more and more. Um, but not many of these are on the state, but they do work.
I'm sorry, there's some talk between some of the village, the village people. The idea of doing something that could make sense on the parkway, that.
Yeah.
So, um. Develop the mitigation. Now, you're writing a book on mitigation. I mean, you take project by project, you know what you're doing. You look at the impacts, you have engineers telling what the impacts are. And then you tell the source of the impact to mitigate the impact. That's smart. So many cities and counties just don't do that. Um, as far as I'm concerned, you're doing the mitigation uh just right. Um, and I, you know, it, it, it's sort of your own defense, you know, these, these, a rosebud comes along and. It's so big, you know, come out of your, you know, how do we manage this? Well, you tell the developer to come up with studies, maybe, did you find this study? Did you know? Okay. Um, yeah, so I, I think what you're doing here is, is uh, is, is viable. Um, and you have a template now for future uh, uh projects. Um, now, one, some, one of the things, let's see, the fourth one down, the, the latecomer fee. Um. So let's say a new developer comes in and they have to widen a, a road. Um, and, but the road widening is only like half of what they need. Um, so you have leftover capacity. So, and, and the developer doesn't wanna pay for that, or somebody else has benefited. Uh, you can have a latecomer chart. So developer builds a brand new road segment or something more than they need. But new development locating along that road and reimburses the primary financier of that road widening. Through what was called a latecomer fee. And it's, it's very common out west, um, and it may be commonly more common than I think it is. Um, so it's very common actually in water and sewer systems. Uh, but it could be done for roads as well.
That's just a construct that you need to enable in your zoning.
Yeah.
And then have a mathematical construct by which you administer it.
And typically, there are state laws that set up the parameters for that. I don't know the law. But typically, it's a ten-year window. So new, new dollar one at the eleventh year, it doesn't pay any. Um, but sometimes it's also an incremental increase in the interest that's charged on us. So, but in, I did some of these in uh, in Mexico. New Mexico law has, these pretty present were caught up by. I don't know what they do with the Georgia, but I think it, I think there are laws in Georgia. Um. Oh, so here's where I began learning what it is you do. Um, and things like the Rosebud Studio DRI. Um, I helped write the DRI law. When I was here. Um, I helped write the DRI, develop the regional impact law, I wrote the impact fee law. Um, the um, uh, uh, the Georgia Planning Act, I had a part of that. So I was a busy, busy guy when I was here, um, and a lot of fun. And I still reflect on those days and actually I, I, I don't wanna, you know, show it off a little bit here, but. I was given an honorary uh commission in the governor's militia as lieutenant colonel. So I'm Colonel Nelson.
Can you be a membership? That sounds cool.
So, um. I learned from, I think it was Doug sent me an email on this. You have thirty-seven thousand acres in the city, therefore you have one uh building right per acre. You have thirty-seven thousand uh units, building, uh billable units. Uh, maybe don't use them all, but that's sort of the, the overall number. Um, the city uh will actually sell building rights it doesn't own. Through the DT, BTC, which is clever. Um, and, and let's say you have ten thousand of those that you sell over between now and whatever, total of a hundred. Um, so you maybe have two hundred million dollars in BTC sale. Now. Not all that money is free money, because you might have to actually buy the PDRs and other properties or explore that.
Well, you know, it's, it's designed for that.
Yeah.
Contamination, so, okay. And it basically has to divide rice or land. Okay, the other stuff happens, yeah, that's, that's hard to explain. There's a perpetual mechanism, so it's an option that then can be used to pay for parks and. Once a business.
But the clever thing is, this is the money that you would use to stand your offices and to maintain your offices. Um, it's a, you know, I'm gonna write this up some, someday and, and, and show it to my uh. Clients around the country, that's something they should think about, although, um, you have a little basic thought, so you need to have this thing. Okay, so now we're gonna go into uh the Georgia Planning Act. Um, do we wanna take a few minutes break or? Yeah, yeah, let's, let's take the five to ten. Let's take five, you know, yeah.
I'm in the, um, it's all week, it's a storage city town manager. We do the, the spring's always in Athens. The fall is always somewhere else in the state. We rotate it, south, north, south, north, south, north. So it's in Dunwood, so, which is local. Not local enough, because it's an hour and a half there, an hour and a half back. I, I mean, I was not, I left, we had a dinner. It's, it's tomorrow too, but today, the afternoon, it's kinda cool, because Thursday afternoons, they usually do tours, you know. Go out and show you sewer plan or this, that and the other, off turn, these off with tennis or something like that. I'm like, I get impact fees, so I won't see all that. But I can't hear the impact and then I'm gonna do, they got things tonight at crap out the city club, but I'm gonna go to South Fulton Municipal Association. Cause it's, it's that green matter. Their food's great. I knew there was one, you know, it's on the film game. I can't, I'm like, oh no. My son, it's senior night. I said, well, oh, it was just gonna be great. It's seven, six thirty for the Mary. Still care, nah. Not the green matter, we're right. I need to do my pressals seven hours. I'll tell you about sessions, it'll be good, good ones this time.
Yeah, I could smell the vinegar.
Same with other. There are a couple of cases where the state can actually. Can pose a city named Road or actually put themselves over a city's will. I don't know, I didn't, the question's. Because that's the thing, as I see, the barrel of the dollars ain't going nowhere. In the dirt road in the city. And one of them is on the parkway requires purchase. Which one is supposed to allow to pay more. Right, I'm just wondering. Exactly. We have our zoning, we're sovereign and all of that. Up until the point the legislature says, shut up and sit down.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wondered, did you know the case where roads can be. Over the will or say local people, the state can do it or something, you know what I mean?
And I, and I can, I can think of the argument, public safety and all these things, but I don't know on the case for most, actually.
That's what I'm worried about. A lot of things I worry about, not so much as we're going to hear of this. In the future. I'm not certain, so Merrill and Landis and. Right before the county senate took it in. I was asked right after that, do a little research and could find a way that could negate it if something's wrong. And I did. I lived there too. And I was, after I passed the law, it was more or less. To annex, it all had to be contiguous. I found an error where he jumped and he was, it goes to Chanhooche. Interesting. Uh, but he did too. And when I, after I passed the law, looked into. Interesting. Fourteen years ago. I, I'm always wondering, yeah, what the state can do. States have a lot of power.
Yes.
No, the state can do a lot, yes.
I know they, that's, that's what I'm worried about in a lot of things.
I'm worried about too, that's why the team, the relationship with the governor and people like that is important, right? They, they wanna bind your passion, they will support you.
Yeah.
Because if they don't.
Yeah, you're a problem.
It's like the Kia plant, right? They, they give it a sound zone.
Oh, really? You know, extrapolating all out. Now, this is gonna be thirty years from now, and I won't be here. But all of these laws about. Land conservation and permanent trust and all that. He was created by the state legislature. And sometime in the future, they can also stroke and depend any rights. When this land becomes so valuable that we help preserve, it's the, the.
My understanding of the way the conservation easements work is it's not that easy, because it is a contract that's attached to the deed between buyers and sellers. It's not the state's issue. And that's why the conservation easements, our program is so important, because that is the one thing that can't be changed.
And you do something very smart too, I think. You, you don't even, you don't keep the easement, you assign them open to a conservancy, right? Right. So future. So future counties wouldn't say, well, that's just changing.
Evidently, you know, we've gone through that one time and it's saying, you know, to break a conservation easement. Is extremely difficult. In fact, we did it. The only way we did it was because we were a city, we actually had to condemn the land and then go to court, right?
And we had to prove that the benefit that we were getting was far greater than the benefit that we were losing. So we, we had a bigger conservation easement on better land somewhere else. It was purple land that we had, that wasn't accessible anyway. And we traded it for land that's right on the river and right on the road. So huge benefit to the community and we were able to talk with the judge and. The trust for public land, all the other parties in the conservation agreement, without that, it couldn't have been.
But that's why we had, we had to use private nation as part of the process.
Yeah, that's the only way to do it. But even then, it required the agreement of all the other parties to deal including just the public.
Look into uh. The impact fees now, uh, we're gonna include some of the details. Um, I would agree, one of three uh co-authors of the impact fee act. Um, in nineteen eighties, nine, um, this was right when Al Farado was doing their impact.
You were Gary? Yeah.
Developers saying, well, if Al Faro is gonna be doing impact fees, look out for the rest of the state. And they went to the governor and they said, do something about this. Um, not that they weren't opposed to impact fees, they just wanted to have the rules that were in place. Um, and so then the governor came to me and uh, would I help write the impact fee act? And since I had experience with impact fees, I was delighted to help. Um, now the governor was, that was all he said, can you help? And I, and I did. Uh, John Sibley on his staff, I don't know if you know the Sibley name, but. Um, he was the one who really put the, the pieces together. Uh, he and I worked on this, you know, you know, John?
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah. The, the last time I saw him, he was in San Antonio, he was somewhere, yeah. Um, and then we had Charlie Seaman who represented the developers. Um, so I remember uh going to the Capitol building, you know, in a big, big room, legislative room. And it was this huge table, might have, might, might have been as long as, as it's a room. And I was sitting at one end or the other and, you know, with other, other co-authors, uh, John and, and Charlie. And everybody else were city uh or county officials and lobbyists, everything else. And we were going over the, the impact fee act. Uh, and the impact fee act has a list of facilities that are allowed to be charged for impact fees. And on that list was missing schools. And so I asked everybody at the table, uh, well, what about schools? Because school impact fees are a big thing in Florida and Texas and I'm not Texas, California and other places. And somebody said, well, is anybody here representing the schools? Hopefully at the table, the schools weren't at the table. And so therefore, the schools were not on the impact fee list when the act came out. It's just a, a lesson, if, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu or something, right? Anyway, let's go over, uh, walk through the impact fee act.
We have, uh, just, again, an aside for, you know, as we've been talking, for example, the village developers. Uh, the requirement to donate land for schools, it's always a part of that conversation as a condition, so. We've been having that conversation in Fulton County already about what kind of schools, about what kind of schools support what we're doing here. Which is not huge schools in the, nowhere, but schools are actually in the places, right? So that's all ongoing as well. Sorry.
I'm not, I'd be emotional, I.
So why was that an ant set in stone? Even though the schools weren't at that table, they couldn't be invited anywhere they're at?
There was a big rush. The legislature here meets only forty days a year or something, so a, a big rush at the end to get this thing out. Provide the ground rules for cities and counties, give some uh predictability for developers, you know, all the good reasons. The schools didn't even wanna be involved.
Okay, okay.
Um, and the cities and counties were saying to me, they don't care about schools anyway. They just, they get whipsawed by the school boards all the time. They, they were happy to have the schools for, for once get something uh, uh, back anyway. Um, now, you know, as you're alluding to. You don't have school impact fees and you're gonna be impacted by development that needs new schools. Georgia law allows you to deny that development for lack of schools.
Which is the lever we have to put the conditions on.
And, yeah, so, um, be careful what you wish, I guess. Uh, so impact fees are what I would call a form of gap financing. So, um, basically, uh, you come up with your, the amount of money you need to build whatever part. Um, and then you say how much money is available. Um, and then what's left over? And I think I've got an example of that. My next slide. No, I, I don't want, um, so. What, what's the cost? What are the revenues? No revenues, taxes, fees, whatever. What's the difference? The difference is the gap. And then you spread the gap across the development to basically build the facilities you built. Um, in Chanhooche Hills, I don't see much of the gap. Your revenue stream is very small.
The, I mean, what, the, the, I guess the comma I would add to what you said is. The gap is your cost less conditioned, we're already picking up costs, less whatever, right? So the gap, whatever's left over after the deed we're already doing.
So here's a, a crude um analysis of your, of revenues and costs. So. I showed you your city hall, you know, you could take that ten million dollar bill and, and there's no way you need to have. Extend the city hall, but police is, is real estate, fires is real estate, parks and recreation, I don't think you have to have that either. So, so I was doing a, you know, maximum analysis, roads is a big question, I don't know how to deal with roads, but I. I, I, I didn't, I couldn't, and I'm not, I wasn't even gonna try. But I, I'm not sure that, I did try, but I couldn't come up with a number. So let's say your impact cost is ten, is eighteen million dollars between now and twenty forty. Remember the cumulative new revenue between now and twenty forty from new residents and new businesses? Adding all that new revenue up to the year twenty forty gives you a quarter billion dollars. Well, um, that's, well, this number, eighteen million is just seven percent of that number. But if we take city hall out and we take the parks out, it's only two percent. Maybe you can do advanced financing and planning enough to find ways to. From other than impact fees, when you just, with just your cash flow, build that new fire station or uh exactions, mitigation actions, um.
What does that mean?
That's the, that's the fees, the, the conditions, right? We're, we're extracting the money from the developers to do this thing.
Some people call it extortion.
Okay.
There you go.
Negotiation.
Lauren, what would you call it?
Lauren calls it negotiation. You used the word extortion. How about contract zoning?
Let's, yeah, same thing. Same thing. You got it. So here are the states that have uh impact the enabling acts. Um, a very dear friend of mine, Julian Dorgensmeyer, who retired last year from Hill to State Hospital. And he's one of the pillars of impact fees. He, he doesn't call these things impact the enabling acts, he calls them impacting restrictions. Because in his view, um, the legislature comes in and they dictate what facilities can be purchased and, and how have, have the planning is done. Um, and some of these restrictions can be very, very uh on- onerous. So, um, in, in some states though, where there, there's no impact the act. Uh, you have a lot more flexibility by local government, especially in the Southern. There's a lot going on there in Tennessee and North Carolina. Uh, there's a lot more flexibility by local governments to pick and choose what they want to use impact fees for, and then, and then perhaps they're the fine doer. So here's uh my, you know, some of my philosophical perspectives. Impact fees are a, a response to new development that comes in and impacts the community. So there's the impact. Um, and then the community has to either raise the money to pay for the impact or simply have that development pay for the impact on its own. Which you're doing now through the mitigation strategies, but impact fees then can take this to another level. Um, and impact fees can be used to eliminate subsidies. So why should the taxpayers at large pay for the impacts of new development? Why can't we have the new development pay for those impacts on the road? Which is what you're doing. A lot of cities though, don't, don't think that way. Um, as a matter of fact, going back to Sandersville. Uh, the mayor there, um, was bemoaning the fact that developers in that city. Could subdivide property. And then sell the lots. And there'll be no roads, no paved roads. And the lot buyers was going to the city, forced the city to pave their roads. Then, then it hadn't happened since the nineteen thirties, so they hadn't caught up to the twentieth century or. Um, I was, I was baffled with that, actually, you know, that's why we have subdivision requirements and subdivision road improvements. And it's like Sandersville missed that page out of the subdivision law. Uh, anyway, they, they did fix that though.
I do, I do also, because just that conversation. Contract zoning is where you don't follow your rules in exchange for money that the developer's giving you to do something else. That's not what we do. What we do is we follow our rules and we require developers to pay for your impacts. That's not contract zoning, it's a different thing, just to be clear.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point. So, um, going back to Alpharetta, um, the first impact fee in Georgia. Um, they were concerned about having adequate public facilities to meet the demands of new growth. Uh, and so they were looking to impact fees to pay for the proportionate share. Uh, of the impact of the development on the facilities and impact the, like, reform of mitigation. Uh, very clear, um, that's what the law says, and the law is actually written in part to reflect what Alpharetta was doing in two eighty nine.
I have a question. And it is pertaining to us so many times. So as we're, we're considering the Merrill Development, more and more people are saying, but it's gonna have a huge impact on the park. So early around, we attempted to mitigate that and also to build us a, um, visitor center. And they took that off the table. So can we make something like that a condition?
You, you can, yeah, for sure, for sure. I mean, you know, some of the things that people are concerned about, like stormwater issues. Right, and EPD.
But just the sheer use, overuse of the park from his development.
I, I think so, right, yeah. Yeah, something, something, yeah.
So long as there's a relationship.
Either number of people and that's.
Now, the law is pretty flexible on that relationship, but you have to show. So here's the list of facilities in Georgia, water, wastewater, stormwater, roads, public safety parks and libraries. Not on the list, schools, because the school board wasn't there. Uh, city hall, transit, public transit and image. Uh, I should have put in ports, uh, California has port impact fees. Um, so does Oregon actually. Um, so some of the, some very big ticket items are not on impact fees, but that doesn't stop you from denying development. It's gonna impact schools and then you force that development to mitigate the impact.
So the question to about my, my scenario with the park and the storm development. If we realize that two thousand one residents are gonna overwhelm my park and we ask for a, um, a visitor center, would that be required to be put in his development specifically for his?
No, no, it would be. Uh, that, that would be an offsite in, uh, improvement.
Okay.
And, yeah, the law allows you to, um, add that and provide that you have the, the, the.
Consider what that looks like, right? Like expanding parking lots too much, just next year. So like there's. What you're doing doesn't necessarily impede some more improvement.
So the law distinguishes between what we call system improvements and project improvements. So you have a subdivision and they require the subdivision to build the roads onsite, the water toward the storm. Uh, everything onsite, and that may be even on the pocket site. Those are all project improvements and they're not impact fee related improvements. Um, but your citywide sewer plant, citywide water plant, major roads, those would be called system improvements. And so impact fees are used to, maybe to get off site items. Um, having said that though, sometimes you have a, a development and the road in front of that development has to have an acceleration ring or deceleration ring or both. And you can tell that developer to add, widen the road for mitigating that impact on the development itself. Uh, so I'd be an, an example of an offset improvement and it's still considered a project improvement. So the key to uh impact the analysis is establishing the level of service. How many acres of park per one thousand population do you want? Well, you have four hundred now, the national average is five. Uh, but, um, how, how many square feet of fire station space per capita? How many square feet of police station per capita? So you need to think that through if you want to have impact fees, you need to establish. How many facilities you need based on a formula that's rooted in level of service. Now, um, I don't know whether I have a slide on this. Oh, yeah, I do. So, um. The level service standard and the, the current level of service, we have. Uh, point five five square feet of fire station per capita right now. We want to maintain that point five five square feet for the future. So you project the future demand and again, you have somebody's square feet of fire station. But what if you only have point five square feet and you wanted point five five? That would be called a deficiency. You don't have enough square feet now to meet your own level of service. So you have to generate other than impact fee money to remedy that deficiency. Or what if you have point six little and you want point five five? You have an, an excess capacity. Say more than you need. Uh, you can recoup that excess capacity value uh through the impact fee. Um, so these are all sort of technical things, but I'm gonna get back to the library example I mentioned earlier. An unnamed county fairly near here. Decided in nineteen and two thousand, thereabouts, two thousand, two thousand and three, that they wanted to have, I'll pick a number. Point five square feet of library space per capita. And you only had point three square feet. But they charged impact fees based on point five square feet. And they were, and they knew they're supposed to use other than impacting money to bring the rest of the, of the library system up to point five square feet. So that the new impact on, so the impact fees of the development be basically keeping that, that level service standard. Well, the county forgot to bring its point three up to point five and used impact fees to bring the point three up to point four five. So used impact fees to not even bring the system up to capacity. Uh, and instead now we're having, we're facing, giving back fifteen million dollars in library impact fees or misspending. Uh, we'll see that. Service areas, um. And. The, the idea of service areas, this is a map of, um, I don't know, two, seven, four, I live now. So this is like a park service area map. If I live here, uh, I'm gonna use parks here, I'm unlikely to use a park way over here than here. So we design service areas to roughly reflect the area in which you would use parks or fire, police services, whatever it is. Now, in Georgia, I've seen counties especially call the whole county one service area. And I think there's some problems there because that means person way over here is paying impact fees or something way over here. And someday, the judge is gonna say, well, wait a minute, there's no relationship between the impact fees generated here and spent over here. Um, there's no benefit back to that fee payer. So I'm waiting for the day when we can make that connection. And then go to court. Not that I'm into litigation business, I just, I just wanna have.
Just, just as a practical question, when you've got a, a place of business, right, a small county. Which will, which is scattered around. If you have a big landmark park like Cofford Mill that everybody can use, it's different from the smaller parks that you'd expect closer to what people. Then a balance of both is probably okay in your game.
So the actual calculation is straightforward, I mean, we can go to court on these sometimes we do, but it's, it's fairly simple, you establish that there's our level of service. You establish, you, you measure the difference between your target level of service and what you have now. That's the excess capacity or their efficiency. Determine growth over twenty years, the time horizon. Estimate the cost of the, the, the new facilities and that becomes what we call the impact cost. And then you subtract from that impact cost the available money. Uh, maybe you, you have some dedicated tax money that could go for those parks and so you subtract that away from the impact cost. Or maybe you have some grants. Uh, so then you come down to what's called the net impact cost. And then you portion that impact cost across development into an impact fee. And I've got an example of how to calculate that. So step by step, and, and let's do a, a park example, even though you're not, likely to have impact these parks here. So let's say you have a hundred acres of parks right there and your city is twenty thousand people. So you have five acres of park per one thousand people. Uh, and that's your, that's your L O S as well. So you need, and you're gonna grow by ten thousand people. So you need fifteen acres of new parks. Cost per acre is a hundred thousand dollars, let's say, the impact cost is five million dollars. Let's say you've got a million dollars available from dedicated money or grants or something. Uh, so your, uh, net impact cost is four million dollars. The impact cost per person is four hundred dollars per person divided by ten thousand new people. And let's say your person per house is two point five, uh, that means the impact fees is a thousand dollars per home. That's basically all you do with the impact fees. Now. I will say though, you know. I show this down here, this is where we have issues of equity and sometimes in going to court. So a. The unnamed city that I mentioned earlier. I've used census data to find, you know, the average household size was two point five and therefore this is the impact fee. And we're charging the, this thousand dollar impact fee or whatever they actually charge, but they were charging that on multifamily, apartments, condos. They're averaging one point eight persons per household. So they were charging more impact fees for certain residential than the impact of that residential on the facilities. And that's a violation of state law, state law requires proportionate share. Um, now we haven't had a lot of joint litigation on that in Georgia yet, I think that day is coming. Um, so be mindful that if you decide to do impact fees, this is very general. We've worked through the, the equity analysis and to make sure that, uh, small homes on small lots in town, homes are assessed in a proportionate fair share. Relative to larger homes and large, there must have been more people than they were average. So then we have, uh, offsets in the form of revenue credits and developer credits. So let's talk about developer credits first. So let's say a developer comes in, a thousand residential units. Um, gonna pay a thousand dollars per unit for impact fees for, for parks. The developer says, wait a minute. Um, I am, I am willing to put money into a park that's, that's next to my project. I'll, I'll pay you for that park, I'll build that park for you. And moreover, the park is part of your park master plan, it's not like the developers who are around it. Here's an actually planned park, here's the developer, uh, project, and the developer says, I will build that park for you. That is a developer credit then, because the developer is, is, is offsetting the, um, the park impact. The revenue credit is different. So let's say that you have a, a special local option sales tax, it's blocked or, and, and now you, in, in, in your city, you have, you have a T-sloth, the transportation sales tax. So let's say that a, let's say you had a road impact fee. Um, and, uh, the road impact fee has to be calculated to reflect the transportation sales taxes coming in. From new development, that'll help offset that cost. So the road impact fee would be reduced by the revenue from the transportation sales tax. A county in Georgia didn't do that and they're in court right now in summary judgment. Uh, we'll see how the judge says.
What if the T-spots doesn't get renewed though? I mean, you, you need to capture that additional revenue.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, if the T-spots doesn't get renewed, then you still.
Oh, yeah.
During the active T-spots.
Yeah, so it's during, so that's a, that's a really interesting question. So your T-sloth is renewed every five years. Um, there's no guarantee it's. So, uh, in this case in Georgia that I'm working on. Um, the county is arguing, well, there's no guarantee the T-spots will be renewed. Except that it's been renewed four times in a row.
Yeah.
And so the reasonable person idea is that it's gonna continue to be renewed. And so you reduce the future impact fees by the expectation of, of the historical practice. But then you put everybody on notice, if the T-sloth that's next full on doesn't pass, the impact fee will go up.
Makes sense.
And then the amount of the T-spots.
Exactly, yes, that's right. Um, the, the statute allows developers to, or fee payers to have their own independent fee study. So the city says, you owe us a million dollars for road impacts. Um, road impact fees, I should say. Um, but you're saying, uh, oh no, we're Serendip, we have four per day for, for now, not ten. Um, so then you put a summary together and you show, here's the Serendip road impact, and here's the. Uh, the, the road impact ordinance, and yeah, you come up with an adjustment to reflect the fact that. Serendip has fewer uh road impacts than regular projects too.
You can also adjust the denominator.
Yeah, on your. Yeah, that's right, exactly. Um. It, it goes without saying, I shouldn't even have to say this, but when you collect the money for impact fees, you need to spend the money for the projects you have on your list. In this other unnamed county, um, the uh emergency services manager had to have a new deal. So it was paid for out of the uh impact fees for libraries. Huh? So uh, and we get this out of the uh Alpharetta case, uh, the very first one. So there the, this, the city planner for Alpharetta, Marie Garrett.
Marie Garrett.
Yeah, she was so concerned about making sure that Serendip was sound right, and good for her. She took the impact fee money that was collected and put it into a dedicated account. Bank account, interest-bearing bank account. This is the impact fee money, and then she had her auditors be, be, make sure that. That money flowed from the bank account to the specific projects. And she did not want to be the person to be litigated in court to undermine all the impact fees in the state. Uh, I think she went overboard, but I'm, I'm thankful that she did what she did in, in the early years. I think she still runs, and she.
Oh, yeah, I talked to her a couple weeks ago.
Okay. Tell her hello for me.
She said.
Okay. Oh, and bottom there, um, so a couple things. About a fifth of all local governments that start impact fees end up abandoning them. Because it's, it's a hassle. You're locking yourselves into specific facilities. And specific revenues to pay for those, those facilities. You need an administrator, this county I'm talking about, nothing, nobody did anything wrong that they knew about. They just didn't have any, a person that knew about impact fees, and so they got themselves trapped by not following the law. So you needed somebody who know, who could administer the impact fees, and so. Your overhead might have to increase and you're constrained. Um, so I don't wanna talk you out of impact fees, I mean, I do them all, all the time across the country, but. Go into the uh, uh, impact fees with, with an open mind, that you aren't, you aren't locking yourselves into a particular way to do things. Um, oh. So a lot of local governments in Georgia. Charge less than the impact fee can be. Which I think is fiscally irresponsible, so. Maybe the impact fee is ten thousand dollars per home, combined water, sewer, fire, police, library, whatever. And developers say, that's too much for us, and the county says, okay, we understand that, we'll cut the total bill by half. Who's gonna generate the money to pay for the uncollected impact fees? If the impact fee is based on gap financing, and you're, and you're raising less than the gap. Where does that money come from? And if you don't build those facilities that you're promising, you need to give the money back. What are you thinking, county commissioners? Um, so, anyway. Uh, if they have their reasons and they, you know, and let them do what they wanna do and hope they're not sued one day, um, we'll see what happens. Um, the next thing here is not limiting deficiencies or misuse the impact of money, I mentioned that. Uh, I, I mentioning, you know, when I raise these cases, I'm raising, you know. I don't, these are, these are the only cases I know where impact fees would be misused. Ninety-nine percent of the impact fees are used correctly, spent correctly, administered correctly, so I'm just talking about, about the outsider. Outliers in, in my reasons. And then proportionality and social equity. Um, when we started impact fees, gosh, in the seventies. Um, we were very crude, and we said, a home is a home is a home is a home. And so it didn't matter how big the home was or what kind of home it was, we just charged an impact fee based on the home itself. We've learned a whole lot since then about issue, uh, social equity, economic equity. And now we want impact fees to reflect. That the larger home, or a larger lot has more impact than a smaller home or a smaller lot. And let's have the impact fees to reflect that. And a Serendip will have, if you had transportation impact fees, the Serendip impact fee should be minuscule. Compared to impact fees elsewhere.
Can you, I mean, so the restrictions around how you're able to, to do those things are important, right? Uh, you do things like lot size, house size for footage, number of bedrooms, whatever, as, as filters, so. Can you add an affordability filter? Because that's the other thing that, you know, again.
I'm glad you raised that. Technically not.
Yeah.
Um, because you're, we're mitigating the impact.
I get it.
Um, so uh, the impact fee law in the state, I think rightfully so, is uh affordable housing law. But that doesn't stop the city or county from doing other things, for example, um. I know cities around the country, not in Georgia, but around the country. Will use a special fund, uh, the housing trust fund. To pay all the part of the impact fees on behalf of affordable housing.
Because otherwise, it's really the rest here.
Exactly. But you know, if you vary impact fees by size and type of house, then automatically.
Some of it, that rests some of it.
And then um, something else that I have theorized, it's not been done yet. Let's say, well, we did this in Albuquerque, Mexico. So let's say you're, uh, you have a large area of um excess capacity. You have more water, more sewer, more capacity than you need. Um, and it's an area that's flooded. And you want to encourage redevelopment. So we calculate the excess capacity in low water sewer. And we say, okay, until the time comes when that excess capacity is absorbed. There's no impact fees in this area, a service area. So we carve out the service area in Albuquerque, and we say, no impact fees here because there's nothing to impact, you have excess capacity. And that attracted new investment in that area. So new homes and new businesses are built, um, until the recession hit back in two thousand and eight, nine.
Yeah.
But that was just starting in Albuquerque, and that was a very interesting outcome, the market follows the impact fee incentives you go. Um, I'm also working on impact fees uh in, in Utah. Um, so Utah, a few years ago, allowed by right. An internal accessory dwelling unit. An internal ADU. So if you have a home, you can take out a piece of it, and.
We allow it to use right here.
Okay, okay.
On every lot.
That's. Um, so in Utah, the local cities and counties, cities actually, would say, oh, okay. You're creating a new residential unit within your home, therefore you owe us a twenty thousand dollar impact fee. And I had a legislator call me, uh, emailing about this, and I said, well, wait a minute. Your average household size in Utah has gone from four persons to two point eight or whatever it is. Your home, your existing homes have, are being occupied by fewer people than they were designed. And so the homes have, if you have excess capacity. And so the legislature took away the ability of local government to charge impact fees on internal ADUs. Because there is no impact, I mean, it might be some, but. Uh, the argument is that there's no impact because that home's only, you're only adding more people back to what that home used to have. Um, yeah. The fine things we need to do in this world. So that's actually the end of my uh presentation. Hang around and talk some more philosophy and, but not politics or religion.
Well, so you, you, you were gonna talk about some options other than, than the gap fees.
Well, um.
The traffic.
Of the traffic.
The special service district is for fire, um, roads and police. Um. You uh, be assertive in your mitigations and new development to generate the upfront money for. Uh, adding fire stations or fire equipment.
So you know, one of the, I, I don't call it a sassy comeback, but at least more than one developer has said. You're asking us not to build on seventy percent of our land, isn't that enough? And I don't, don't really know how to answer that. You know, so, so some developers are saying. By us asking them not to build on seventy percent of their land, but that, that in itself isn't any.
It is. I mean, there's no question about it, it is.
So I don't know how. If we should say, well, you know, that's one thing, but you're using our roads still, so that's another thing.
Yeah. Well, and that, that's what we've been doing, right, we've been, we've been adding impact, impact fees.
So it's based on your thirty percent.
Based on. It's, it's pay-to-play, you're, you have to eat these things to be able to do stuff here, because we don't, that we believe in, or otherwise.
So by the way, at the densities you have in Serendip. Um, relative to say, um, Dunwood. Um.
Okay.
Your facility costs are about one third per home compared to Dunwood.
Because things like sewer pipes need to run far less space and even.
Because judicial.
Close on nodes means you're not having to build that infrastructure out of the whole property. You think about every other town, Roswell or whatever. Sewer pipes, water pipes, roads have to run literally to every corner of the whole city. Huge savings that way.
Yeah. And you can use your savings to generate the, you use the savings. To then buy the fire station you need or buy the new, new station or. So by, through fiscal management and efficient land use patterns. You don't have to impact fees, you can use the money you're saving to add facilities where you need to.
Our, our model, I mean, if you think about our model in, in term, right? The, the conditions of zoning related things around things like fire trucks and fire stations and roads and all of that. Cover the short-term gap. The long-term gap, we're just buying down property taxes, we can't borrow property taxes, because we've got many of these low-impact developments.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I like the buying down property taxes. And the idea of doing something like the traffic, I really like the traffic. Piece that we talked about, because the idea of taking the piece that the property taxes and removing it from the general burden. And putting it on the traffic impact generators instead. Is definitely, it's an equity, like definitely, people are creating a problem that's worse.
So we see the traffic and the public safety as the biggest impacts that these developments are bringing. We don't have. You don't have a program set up other than the conditions we add to our southern half of the nation. Is that adequate at this point, or do we start formalizing this with the formal.
I think you do math, right? Open your mouth based on what, what you give us, right? I think there's a, a conversation to be had about the, the traffic impact thing. Again, not, it's not an issue yet, but as non-residential uses come in, if they're higher impact. They'll be able to pay more taxes that way.
Right.
But we can get ready for that, that's one of several things, things that don't really matter yet, but you know, be ready for it.
So like minerals development, which is set to build out over thirty-five years, we would reassess that. With each phase development, uh, each build-out for each year or?
The traffic district thing can happen anytime. The impact fees, we'd have to have. We'd have to have a list of things that we need to do, do we consider doing an impact fee right now, that's not something that could happen in the short term.
So.
It's a conversation.
If developments are approved, like Serendip, can, can we enact impact fees for a, a.
On.
I mean, face it, okay. We can't just say, oh, we've been doing this all along, no, not you, but that's big.
They do have flexibility.
Okay.
Um, I was just thinking, uh, what was I thinking? Oh, the special service district can still raise capital.
For sure.
So again, you wouldn't need necessarily a road impact fee. Because the district can borrow money it needs to put in the improvements and then spread the payment to C I Ds there. In fact, developers love that.
Yeah. But the, I mean, the thing about special service districts and C I Ds too. Is it because you have an unit stream of property moving forward, you can bond it and sit now, and you can raise the money now that the future taxes paid for. And so, you know, in those places, we have that kind of impact, that makes sense. And, and it makes sense to the developer too, because they're uploading their spots onto the taxes. That they include. It's an increment above, so everybody's already paying these self-taxing. I know the focus is on possible additional structure here. I mean, and I'm not sure if impact fees are right at this point, but. Especially use districts seem pretty interesting. But I wanna just thank you a couple of things. You're coming in fresh eyes, your urban planning experience. There were a couple of things you said that really surprised, one was you were, and they should, because I live in this area and I get distorted views of certain people. Um, and the traffic, uh, capacities surprised me. That you thought we were literally at A level and had a lot of excess capacity.
On your.
Yeah.
Your city roads, not.
On, on that city, it's, I, I found that a, a, a. Different, uh, different, uh, um, observation than I think a lot of this. Thing hold at this point, but, but I, I get it, it was. And the observation about the parks, about the number of acres per resident being so far above any kind of. National avenue, not just that, but cities and size. What do we have, four acres per.
Four hundred.
Four hundred. As opposed to. It's fine, good five, good five, which is. I found those very, uh, very interesting ones. And I know that's the thrust of this, this part pieces of it, but.
But it plays into it, because when you do impact fees, parks is one of the areas you can do impact fees, but that shows you, you don't need to impact fees apart.
Roads, yes. The, the overall thing is plan for the future, right?
Right.
Figure out what you are gonna be like twenty-four day in plans.
Yeah.
And, and, and so maybe not tomorrow, but. Could future, it is incredibly rewarding to have someone become, and you bring them to the address to say, oh, we've already done that. Oh, you already got that in Arizona, oh, you.
Hello, question please. Uh, my interest or what of impact, well, let's come from a perspective. In that, it seems like with impact fees, everything is published. You wanna do this, look at table one, go down, this is what you're doing, this is what it costs. Everything is in black and white, there is no question, very little. On the other extreme, basically, all of the impacts are mitigated through negotiation. And you use the word extortion, which, again, I am used to, you know, I have the word contract, some. These, this to me seems to be one end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum. Okay, and that was my concern. Now, let's say we have negotiated some and so forth for impact. Who normally does this negotiation for the city or the county or whatever? Is there usually somebody on staff in community planning that does this? Or who is the person normally tasked with this? Or what are the alternatives for that?
Well, uh, in my experience, it's the city staff. Um, that could be planning or public works or a team. And they evaluate the impacts, and then they, they determine what is needed to mitigate the impacts. And then the city attorney gets involved to make sure that it's compliant with the laws. And then they negotiate with the developer and the developer's attorney. Then they come up with a developer agreement. Uh, and so in exchange for paying fees or doing this and doing that, you'll get certain permits at certain points in time. That's done all the time.
Okay, so it seems like the, the negotiations by the city would be a team.
Yeah.
From the various staff. From the various staff and the attorney.
Yeah, yeah, typically, yeah.
And the attorney to make sure you do not step over that very fuzzy line from negotiations to contract zoning, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, that is exactly right. Um, I don't even use the term contract zoning, that actually is not even in the lexicon anymore. Basically, what we do now is, is, um, development agreements. And that, that can include zone changes and conditions and variances and so it's a contract, but it's not contract zoning. It's a development agreement that has certain.
I just, that was another question, is it basically, who usually does the negotiating? So.
It's a consortium of staff, yeah.
Public safety, public works, planning, city manager are involved in those conversations, it's all really good.